Joanna, was it six? How many we need for the quorum?
Six.
Excuse me, six.
Okay, we'll start the meeting, call the meeting to order. 6:30. Okay, we'll stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag. All right, so, let's see, I only have on my screen. So, do you want to just do a roll call for the minutes, so we have everybody listed?
That would be great, yeah, and I just want to be sure, Richard, are we recording? Yes, we're recording, okay.
Okay, so I'll start myself, Jim Bowen from Seymour. Who else we have?
Do we have Bob Clark?
Yes, you do.
Bob Clark from?
Woodbury.
Okay. I have David White.
Here.
From Bristol, yes?
Bristol.
Okay. We've got, you said Jim, Ginny Harger?
Hello.
Hi Ginny, Shelton?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you. And, let's see.
Got Lori?
One more time?
We have Lori, right?
Lori Rotella?
Lori Rotella from Nogatuck.
Okay. I was gonna say Nicole from Derby?
Nicole Signoli from Derby Public Library in Derby.
Hi Nicole, thank you, I don't think I've seen your face before, nice to see you. Thank you. And, let's see here. Am I missing anybody?
Joanna, it's Bob Nerny from Waterbury. I'm sitting in as a non-appointed attendee.
Right, thank you so much for joining us this evening. For those of you on the call, Bob is the new city planner for the city of Waterbury. He hasn't been appointed by, to the RPC, but I invited him to come into this meeting today.
Great.
Glad to have you, Bob.
Nice to see you, Bob.
Welcome.
Likewise.
And, I did get a message that Marcus Lawn will eventually be joining us from Plymouth, but I don't see him yet, but we do have six people and we do have a quorum.
Okay, then, then from, from the cog, we have, I see, I see Keith looming around there somewhere, right?
There we go, I'm here today.
There's Keith, there's Keith, and we have Joanna, and who else do we have? Richard?
Richard, GIS analyst with NVCog, also Zoom master.
Okay, so we got everybody, we didn't miss anybody.
Yes, we also have Aaron Boudres.
Aaron, yeah.
He's our environmental guy, and we're, as a guest presenter, we have Victoria, I, I want to say, I thought your last name was Brutes, but it's not?
It is, everything's shifting, I just recently got married, so some things are vitri, some things are bred still.
Understood.
It'll happen one day.
Victoria Vitri from SLR, thank you for joining us.
Okay, great, we have a roll call, we have any public comment, did we receive anything in writing?
We did not receive anything in writing.
All right, so administrative items, adoption of our December 1, 2020 meeting. Looked to be in order, I'll entertain a motion for acceptance in those minutes.
I move the minutes as presented.
Oh, we got?
Was that, was that Bob?
It was.
Okay.
Second.
Who's, who did the second, Lori?
Ginny.
Ginny, thank you Ginny.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Okay, a, a, abstentions? Okay, we've got referrals. What do we have, Joanna, for the referrals?
So, I'm going to turn it over to Keith Rosenfeld.
Today, yep, Jim, I have a report of the referrals that they were done by the NVCog over the past two months. I have nine referrals, six were from non-NVCog communities, and three were from NVCog communities. Of the six non-NVCog referrals, we have three from Newton, Newtown, excuse me, one that allowed for additional rental housing. Another one, which was done to modify the zoning regulations as it pertained to accessory apartments, as well as increasing the maximum allowance for the height of industrial buildings to 45 feet. One from Monroe to modify their existing affordable housing district and, and a zone change to allow for a larger location. One from Roxbury to modify their parking chart. One from Monroe for a new commercial vehicle facility to be allowed by a special exception. And then, of the three NVCog referrals, we received one from Bristol, an amendment that creates a process to allow the CEO to provide assistance and mediation regarding persons with, who are handicapped and are trying to meet ADA requirements and zoning constraints. We also have one from Cheshire to modify the zoning regulations for storehouse and warehouse distribution, as well as one from Nogatuck, which we received in the beginning of the month. Initiating zone change for a large number of properties in Spring Street, Bridge Street neighborhood to make the area more cohesive. None of the referrals were regionally significant or presented any intermunicipal impacts. All seems to, all seem to appear generally consistent with the NVCog PCOD. But, as we get into the roundtable, maybe both the representative Lori, as well as the representative from, from Bristol, would like to discuss their two amendments. I thought they were interesting, the one from Bristol seems to add a mediative process in, in an unusual, in a usually bureaucratic process of zoning, and the other one is, I'd like to hear from Lori about, about the, the zone changes in the Spring Street, Bridge Street area, and what was the purpose, and maybe, what, what would be the, the anticipated outcome? So, that's my report. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer any, and if not, we can participate in the roundtable later on those issues.
All right, thanks Keith. What? Do we have any correspondence, Joanna?
Yeah, we had one appointment, actually, from Woodbury, David Chapman is appointed as alternate for the RPC, and that's all that we got.
Okay, great. All right, move to item three, update regarding the NVCog natural hazard mitigation plan, and we have David for that.
Today, we're going to have Victoria.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's Victoria, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay, Victoria, you can share whenever you like.
Sure, so, I'll give you a quick update on the Hazard Mitigation Plan, as well as Resilient Connecticut. So, for the Hazard Mitigation Plan, I don't have any slides, but we do have some things coming up. We have the mitigation action workshop, which is going to be taking place tomorrow, so that's for CEOs, municipal staff. Any folks on the call this evening from the RPC are also welcome to join. So, if anybody's interested in joining that, you can either let myself know, or David, that'll be tomorrow morning from 9:00 AM to, I believe, 10:15, and we'll just be discussing some of the regional mitigation actions, as well as, you know, some of the general overview of community-specific actions. We'll be holding a similar workshop for the public, that'll be next week, February 10th, and that'll be at 6:00 PM. Again, that's focused on the mitigation actions. Not quite as specific, since it will be for the public, but a general overview, and then registration for that, a link for that is available on the NVCog website. So, folks can, can visit the NVCog website and register for that. Let's see, we've been working on public engagement and trying to increase, increase that throughout the region. So, we've been working on presenting with local planning and zoning boards. We've had six scheduled, two meetings have been complete. I believe Dave and Scott Bignotti have reached out to a few communities and haven't heard back. But if anybody on the call has not had a presentation at the P&amp;Z meetings and is interested, you can, again, reach out to myself, or Dave, or maybe Scott Bignotti, that name might also sound familiar, and we've just been doing a quick presentation. Again, it's, it's another way to reach some of the public, as well as some of the other boards and, you know, committees in each municipality. So, we have that, and then we also do have, our survey has been launched, and we've also have a story map that's specific to the Hazard Mitigation Plan, gives a little more info detailing the hazards that are, are being covered in the plan, a little bit more background on the Hazard Mitigation Plan itself, and then again, this public survey. So, all folks, you know, public and, and those municipal staff are encouraged to take this survey, so again, that's another resource, and can also be found on the NVCog website, thank you, I see Aaron has, has the link there. So, just some actions going on, everything that comes out of the workshops and the public meetings will ultimately be incorporated into the regional plan and each municipal annex, so we're working on getting, getting the first workshop information into the annexes, and, and after the second, and then the public meetings, we'll, we'll start putting all of that together. That is all I have for the Hazard Mitigation Plan, were there any questions regarding that? And then I can move on to Resilient Connecticut. All right, all right, again, was that? All right, again, if anybody wants to participate in the workshop tomorrow, feel free to reach out to myself, David, or possibly Aaron. I know David put together the, the Zoom information, so we can get you in for that.
Was that sent out to all the, the first electmen and mayors, were they all tuned in on that?
It should have been, I believe a Zoom, or excuse me, maybe a meeting invite was sent out.
I think it went out to all of the, the local coordinators that are working with,
Right, right.
directly with us on, on the project, and it was CC'd to the CEOs as well.
Okay, great.
We can send it out to all of you as well, if you'd like.
Yeah, it would, if, if possible, if you have, if you have the information.
Yeah, we can do that.
You can follow up.
I received a invite already, maybe Jim, Jim Stewart might have sent me one, so I'm signed up for it tomorrow.
Okay, great. Yeah, we just want to make sure folks who, who want to participate, you know, are aware, so good, we'll, we'll get that information out to you all after. And like I said, there's room, so, you know, not a problem at all getting anybody in last minute, and that's from 9:00 to 10:15. All right. All right, so that's all I have for the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and I will scoot on over to Resilient Connecticut. Again, another short and sweet update for you all, I do have a couple slides, so let me share those quick. All right, let's see, Joanna, I'm just gonna, I believe it's you, I'll take you over for a second, if you don't mind.
Absolutely, go ahead.
All right. All right, great. The infamous line, hopefully you can all see my screen, so we don't have, we don't have a ton to update on Resilient Connecticut, although we've had a very productive January. We have three of our four first regional workshops that we've completed. One of those completed being NVCog, so far, the three of the four, we've gotten a lot of great feedback on the first half of our Phase 2 project. The first regional workshop really focused on flooding and our climate change vulnerability index and the zones of shared risk, which I'm, hopefully, is kind of ringing the bell for most. So, we'll be soon, we'll soon be releasing the heat and the wind results, we're, we're working on that analysis now. I'll have a couple quick images, just to hopefully jog some memories on the CCVI and these ZSR, the Zones of Shared Risk. So, we'll be releasing all of that very soon, all of the feedback from the workshops, which so far, like I said, we've gotten a lot, is going to be incorporated into the next round of the CCVI and the Zones of Shared Risk. And because we know a lot of folks who may have wanted to participate in the workshop weren't able to, we're working on putting together a lot of follow-up material, so that way, people can take a look at the tools and people can take a look at the data, kind of on their own time, and provide some, you know, feedback, or if they have any questions or clarifications. So, over the next few weeks, some information that will be blasting to all of the cogs. We'll have, we'll be launching a story map, we've, we've kind of been going back and forth on finalizing that, but that's pretty much rounded out. So, we'll be releasing the story map, which will have some more information about this entire phase of the Resilient Connecticut project, as well as some surveys and some feedback contacts, you can contact Circa, you can contact myself or David directly regarding the Resilient Connecticut, if you have any questions, or I know David also said we can do some smaller, you know, smaller presentations, if anybody wants a little more information about what's going on in the project. So, if anyone was interested in that, we could do that. And then, just to give you folks a quick idea of, of the tools that we covered in the workshop, that we're still working on expanding. This is our Climate Change Vulnerability Index, it is public, it's available right through GIS Online, I could send that link out to folks that are interested, but like I said, we'll be sending it out with some follow-up information as well, pretty shortly. So, this is just to go over the flooding vulnerability and how we've kind of calculated it on a grid level. There's a lot of information, if you take a look on the left, the left side pane of this interactive map, if you take a look at it, if you choose to take a look at it when we send it over, hopefully, you know, explaining the analysis that we're working on, but just to give everybody an idea, you know, we went through this map, we went through some specific areas and some of the data, that's really built into this analysis, you know, to try and highlight some of these vulnerable areas. So, this is for flooding, like I said, we're going to be having a heat and wind, so we'll eventually be sending out a nice package of, of all of those materials for the CCVI, and then the Zones of Shared Risk, we've also been delineating and sketching those, so you can see here, we've got those TOD-oriented Zones of Shared Risk, again, this is a separate tool, but also an interactive online tool, so people can take a look at these zones, we have flood, heat, and wind-related zones, primarily flooding, just because that's typically, you know, the most noted and the most documented, you know, throughout plans and your conversations and workshops and whatnot. But again, we're, we're working on kind of a second, second draft of these tools, so they'll be sent out to everybody. So, when you see this come across your email, you know, take a few minutes, try to explore the data, we're going to be putting a little more information into the maps as to, you know, what they are, what you're looking at, and kind of how you can explore them, and then there'll be ample opportunity for, you know, feedback, whether it's, if you want to send myself an email, I actually just got two today regarding the CCVI, or filling out the survey, just to give us some, some information. So, that's what's going on with Resilient Connecticut, so really, just kind of a heads up for some, some feedback and participation that we're hoping everyone will have time to do. That is all I have for Resilient Connecticut as well, again, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to field them.
All right, thanks.
Victoria, Victoria, I do have a question, this is Joanna. I know that this, this came up from one of our RPC members, the workshops, are they recordings available?
Yeah, we did record the first three, we will be posting those, and we'll be sending those out as well, with kind of the follow-up package, so kind of, if you want to take a look, this is what we covered, and then, you know, links to tools and things like that. We do have, if anybody was interested in still participating and wasn't able to make it to the NVCog specific one, we do have one coming up on Monday morning. The general presentations are the same for all four, we just focus on a different region, and Monday will be MetroCog, we'll be, we'll be looking at MetroCog communities. So, that's during the breakout, so it'll be a little more focused. But anybody from any region is welcome to attend that one, if anyone was interested.
Is there, could you give us a timeframe for when we might see the recordings being available?
Yeah.
Next week, week, week after?
Yeah, we're working with Circa and getting some of those, they'll be putting them onto their website, so we're working with them now. So, I'm hoping, let's see, if our last one is the eighth. I'm hoping by the end of next week, we can get the recordings up, once we have all four workshops done, so, yeah, once they're up, we'll, we'll send everything out, for sure.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I just ask, we received a 14-page PowerPoint presentation back on December 4th. Was there any other printed materials available, other than what's on the UConn website, which was a link?
Um, so I think the best resource will be, and again, the story map, which is what we're, we're working on, that's it, it's going to be a landing page for kind of this phase. So, it'll have all of the, it'll have, you know, several presentations, it'll have, you know, the interactive tools and some of the other, you know, kind of Resilient Connecticut-related resources. Was there anything specific you were looking for, or just?
Just whatever material was presented at the, at the meeting, so if it's coming up, that's fine.
Right, okay, yeah, that, like I said, once we send everything out from the workshops, there'll be several links, if there's something that you think we might be missing, you know, please let us know, but most everything, we're trying to keep posted and updating, you know, updating for folks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other questions on the topic? Okay, so, I'm, we're going to move to item five in the roundtable. I'm just going to say from this, there's six of us here, I believe, of members, say from Seymour, we don't have, you know, it's been pretty slow. Pretty much, everything I discussed at the last meeting is pretty much what we have going on. So, David, you want to just go over that, that part that Keith was mentioning?
Yeah. It's actually not very complicated, it was decided that, for efficiency, a lot of the handicap requirements do not need to go before the entire process with zoning, that we can easily take care of the majority of the requests through our zoning enforcement officer, along with staff. This is just to expedite things, so that we don't drag things out. That's basically it.
And so, do you have an ADA coordinator in your town?
I don't really know the answer to that, if there is one, I'm not familiar.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that I might add to that is if your CEO, on, for the ADA requirements, they're all handled by the judicial branch. I know as a building official, we get involved with it, when it, in regards to new construction and some existing, but I, I think that, if you, if you head in that direction, you might want to talk to that building, if you're a building official as well, and have, I mean, when you say staff, obviously, he's a member of the staff, to help the CEO out, not.
I'm referring to land office staff, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 it gets a little, I know, I know that in Beacon Falls, on the ADA compliance coordinator, it gets a little tricky, I'm still, still trying to wrap my head around it, but I know, I know it's a great move that you guys are doing, because it's a big issue.
Thank you, yeah. Well, as long as I've got it, got the floor here, there are two other things I wanted to bring up. One is that our rewrite of our zoning regulations is moving along, we had eight applications. A recent Zoom meeting with the committee members who are working with us, have narrowed it down to four, and on February 19th, we're going to hopefully be receiving presentations from the four companies that have put in applications. Really quite excited about the, the results that we are hoping to see. One last thing. We've had, you, you may or may not be familiar with the Sessions Building here in town. This is a, a company that has gone out of business a number of years ago, but is still owned by the Sessions family. There's a lot of tax in arrears, but we have an interested party that is, I think, potentially buying the building for $1, and that they will clear up the back taxes, and they are going to be cleaning up the, the brownfield that is associated with the building, and the ultimate goal is to have apartments, one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments. These will be at market value. This, this building has remained vacant for a number of years, so this is a, a well-welcome activity. But, you know, interestingly, the Sessions Building has, I believe, the only water elevator, water-powered elevator left in, maybe New England, and they hope to keep that usable. That's all I have.
All right, thanks David. Ginny, you want to, you want to go next?
Sure, in looking over the minutes, one of the comments I had back in December was that we were a little disappointed that a shopping center on Bridgeport Avenue that had been approved last year had sort of stalled to a stop. Well, luckily, work has resumed, they have apparently worked out something, and so there has been activity there to continue on. One of the things that we're really excited about is that last Wednesday night, we approved the site plan for a company who is a currently located in the Bronx, is going to be relocating and taking 207,000 square feet in a building that's almost 500,000 square feet, that was built in 1978 to house Phillips Medical and Timex. Right now, the current occupant is PerkinElmer, and so PerkinElmer is going to stay with the balance of 243, but this other company is coming in, and they are a very successful company that apparently earlier generation had founded, and the current person who is the son, is the person that's currently running it, they run 24/7, and their shifts are 211, office and manufacturing on the first shift, that starts at 6:00 in the morning, 50 on the second, and 40 on the third. They, the company does injection blow molding, and their most identifiable products are the little plastic cases that commemorative coin sets come in, and also, if you have a, a football or baseball that's signed, and you put it in a display case with a cover, they do those, and it's things along that. So, we're very excited, because this particular piece of property, while it's been occupied by PerkinElmer for a while, it has two very large parking lots, and the parking lot that was adjacent to Bridgeport Avenue had been proposed to be turned to, into apartment houses, they wanted a zone change for that, and earlier, the last fall, and we denied the zone change, and we said, no, we, we don't feel that there's any need to change that zone, we want it to stay, and luckily, this company apparently started looking in 20, at the end of 2020, for a facility, there was some, apparently, the family members that own the property that it's presently in was going to raise the rent, quadruple the rent for this particular family member, and he, that's when he decided, I think I'm going to look elsewhere, and luckily, he found this building, so we're thrilled that the, that they're coming to Shelton, it means a lot over, you know, an operation like that, and the number of jobs that are going to be available to area residents. So, that's about it.
All right, thanks. Lori?
Hey, so, the change, the zone change, it was multiple different zones in this one area, the Bridge Street, Spring Street area, and the zoning commission formed a committee, and they were looking to kind of unify over that, all the different zones, 57 different properties, they wanted to rezone to a B2. When it came before my planning commission, and I sent my review to them, and I believed it would be a good change, but I wanted to eliminate 11 properties. Two of those were manufacturing, which isn't allowed in the B2 zone, and they're successful companies, and one of them on Spring Street is looking to eventually expand. So, if we changed it to B2, and then had to change it back to a zone that would allow for manufacturing, it just didn't make sense for me, to me. So, the Planning Commission actually gave it a negative referral, without prejudice, they said, they'd like to modify the plan to exclude the 11 properties that I was talking about, and then come back to them. Or they could just vote on it and get the supermajority vote, minus those 11 properties. So, that's kind of what the idea was before that, I mean, with that, is that what you were looking for, Keith?
Yes.
So.
My question is, were there any residential properties that are now, two questions, are now non-conforming because of that, obviously? And, are, are you looking now to combine some of those smaller properties for viable commercial developments?
Well, that was the Well, that was the thing Brennan Street and Diamond Street are mostly single families, which were allowed. It would make all of those nonconforming.
Right.
They are looking to make that more of a business zone. So we had like 20, I think I counted, I sent a chart out to my planning commission that would be nonconforming because they were conforming now in the zone they were in.
Right.
So they're looking, they sent it back to zoning, zoning has to look at it and decide what they want to do. If they're gonna just move forward with any of this or wait and possibly do a design district between Spring Street, Bridge Street, North Main and up Prospect Street. Yeah.
That might work a little better.
It might, it'll take a little longer, you know, we don't have many industrial zones except up in the industrial park, which some of these manufacturers are smaller, they don't need the four acres that's required up there. So I was thinking we could leave at least a couple that are here, you know, Culture Foods, it went into Yo Farm, Culture Fresh Foods, so they're like a yogurt, but the non dairy type.
Sure.
So that was a good fit right into there, but they're looking to expand, they said, in the near future. And I thought it wouldn't be the best idea to take it to a zone that's not including manufacturing.
Good idea.
Same thing with Colex over on General Pulaski Way, you know, over by, what is it, Kentucky Fried Chicken there?
Right.
That's another little manufacturing place that's been in business since 94. Why make it nonconforming now? It just didn't make sense to me. So I just think they need a little bit more time to look into the properties. So anyways, they go before zoning again on February 17th for the public hearing. We'll see how it works out.
Thanks for the report.
Thanks, Lori.
We got Bob. Right. What do we have next? We have a Bob?
Bob, Bob, are you on?
I'm on.
Okay, you're on.
Planning Commission is working on a master walkway plan for the town. And the zoning commission is still putting along revising the or adapting the, a new plan for zoning. That's it from Woodbury.
All right, Bob, thanks. Let's see, hello, let's see, we got there, Nicole from Derby?
Sure, thank you, Derby. What happened last month was exciting, finally, on the south side of Main Street at the corner where Life Touch was. They have planning and zoning approved 70 units in an L-shaped building right there. Again, market value apartments, kind of again, what we talked about in the past couple of meetings here, being able to bring apartments to the rail line. So it's right there, it's across the street and the rail station is right there. I do know that the Planning and Zoning Commission, kind of piggybacking on some of the other speakers just now, subcommittee has been formed to do, I can't think of the kind of design. I want to say it's like what you had said, unique design or an art design to try to help instead of constantly changing the bylaws to make different zones again, that can be a little bit more flexible along the 34 corridor going up to the dam and other places. They're trying to look at different ways to be creative for, like you had said, smaller industry, different kinds of industry that come into Derby. And no news on the Department of Transportation on 34 or the, the larger project of the south side of Main Street.
Is that, does that project include, is that a mixed development or is that all going to be residential apartments, market rate?
The 70 was only apartments.
Only apartments.
I think we're not, they do not have, I don't, they were going to put like a cafe in some, I think it has a gym, maybe enough room for a gym for the residents, but it's not a mixed use at all.
Yeah, I think, I think the trend definitely of the Naughton Valley, Shelton Derby, not so much, and so when you see more, we're picking up a little bit. Is are these, you know, larger scale apartments? And I, I said in the past, it really shows the, the change, the shift of the demographics to our area. My concern always is, you know, that we're not getting the local small business again, and especially these times of COVID and everything else, everybody's struggling. But you know, the, the demographics of the towns are really, really going to change. You know, in the long term. So that's something that's always been on my mind. So it's great to, you know, hear about these projects. But then I really hope all of them were very, very successful. But just like the 55 and older was so popular about a decade ago, you know, and now they're still somewhat, but they had to scale back on them. You know, so we got a lot of, a lot of New York people filling those up. So not a lot of affordable stuff for the people in the valley or in Connecticut. But all right, but thanks for that update. Who else do we have? We, we get everybody for members?
No, I think we, we have, we had a few people join. I think there is Marcus on the line.
Yes.
Marcus, okay. Marcus from Plymouth.
Hi. Hi. One thing is that the, the Prospect Street School, that was that redevelopment of an old school from 1910 that was held up by litigation. The developer is now taking possession of the school building. So I don't know when he'll be able to start, but now he can actually go in and start to start doing the cleanup and figure out how he's going to approach the redevelopment of the building and site. So that's good news. I've been considering on behalf of the commission, trying to do some rezonings. None of them would require, at this time, none of those required procedurally to advise the council, Longmont Valley Council of Government yet. Once I got towards actually putting a proposal together, I would of course advise Joanne so that she would know and the agency would know what was going, but none of these, the situations I was looking at were within 500 feet of the town boundary. And that would trigger automatic one month ahead of time notification. Those are two smaller sites, one in Rose.
Do we lose Joanna?
I think he's gone.
Yeah, I apologize. Yeah, yeah, I do believe, oh, Marcus, are you still there? Marcus, we can't hear you. I, he's still on the list, but I don't, oh, he just disappeared. Hopefully we'll get him back.
Okay, and, and who else had joined in, Joanna?
Jay Carroll from Southbury. Jay, do you want to share what's going on in Southbury? Jay, you have to unmute yourself. We're not hearing you.
Okay. I'm, we, I've had a difficult time because I've been, the, the planning director is just not feeding me the information that I asked for. So I can't, I have nothing to report from Southbury. I'm sorry about that. We're trying to get all of the connections back in place so that I can find, you know, what I should be reporting to you. And I'm sorry about the delay in, in getting that to you. We're fixing the, the communications and getting them back in order. Ever since the former planning director left, I have just had a difficult time. And evidently, the new director is overloaded with work and I, I never get responses back from her. So pardon Southbury, but we'll get it right next time.
That's great. Thank you. We appreciate anything you can, you can share.
Nothing to share at this time. I just, I, I don't have that information right now.
That's okay.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Joanna, anybody else we're missing here?
I don't think so. Does anyone want to pipe up and if we missed them?
Well, I would like to pipe up with a question if I could.
Absolutely. Stacy, we didn't hear from Thomas. I apologize.
Oh, no, no, no problem. That would have been just fine, but I actually had a question for David about the Sessions Building.
Fire away.
Just simply because I have a daughter who loves volunteering at the Bunny Rescue, that's also in that building. I was just wondering if you had any timetable in place in terms of when that's gonna be switching over. I'm sorry, I think you're muted.
The information that I shared is really preliminary. There has been no definitive plan about when everything is going to be put into place. So it's, it, it's just preliminary at this point.
Gotcha. No, no problem. I was just curious because I know she'd be very interested to know. As far as Thomaston goes, lots of accessory apartment applications. We did have location approvals, two. It was kind of funny, two right at the same time, you could go years without them and then two at the same meeting. For one, for a repair place and one for a high end, like a small car dealership, both of which were using previously approved space. So we got to make use of the ability to waive the need for a public hearing, which came out of the most recent court. There was a court decision over, I believe, last summer about that stating that you did not need to have a public hearing in the case where it's same location as was previously approved and the terms are essentially similar. So we did that last month and we have them setting up shop as we speak, which is wonderful. The commission is actually looking to revisit its accessory apartment regulations. Right now, we only permit accessory apartments in that are attached to the main dwelling and they are open to considering the possibility of permitting accessory apartments in a detached structure. So that's one of the things we're going to be starting some discussions on tomorrow evening. We are also looking at making some updates as pertains to storm water management requirements in our zoning regulations. We're going to start with the zoning regulations. I think it was Aaron who had put together some recommendations and a really handily handy presentation. So we're kind of using that as a guidepost to get started, to make some changes that we needed to make in the zoning regs. And I'd say that's probably where we're at.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, and I see that Marcus is trying to join us again. Hello, Marcus. Oh, hold on, let's try again. Well, it's taking a while for him to join, so. Oh, I think he's in. Marcus, are you with us?
Well, well, we get, if he jumps back in, why don't we, we can always pick up on that, Joanne. Want to jump to the regional?
Yeah, sure. So we haven't done any physical work on the plan, but again, we're, we're hoping to have a draft done by the end of this year. And that involves obviously outreach and that kind of thing. But also what we've been talking about more recently among staff, the NB Cog staff is to put together, hopefully, this is a component of the regional plan of conservation development anyway. But we, we're talking about doing a regional housing, affordable housing plan as well, to kind of piggyback on all the municipal housing plans that are due next year, July 2022. So that's what we've been talking about and we're going to have a more detailed discussion in the next couple of days among staff about how we would approach this. But I also wanted to take this opportunity just to talk about the affordable housing plans. We've gotten a few more inquiries about them from our NB Cog towns. So I just want to take this opportunity to say we can help out with data and with mapping, which is something that we'll be doing anyway with our regional plan of conservation development. But that's all I've got on that moment, on that plan rather, on that agenda item, oh dear God.
Okay, anybody have any, any questions or any comments on the, on that for Joanna at this point? And then are you, are you doing the update on the long-term recovery as well?
Yes, I am. So regarding the long-term recovery, this is long-term recovery from the economic recovery from the effects of COVID-19. So right now, the Shelton Economic Development Corporation is, they got a grant from the Economic Development Agency to update the SEDS plan. It's involving the economic policy kind of impacts the economic policy of the 19 NB Cog towns. They've got a the Burns Company, a Burns consultant, doing the update right now. As far as the Naughton Valley Council of Governments, what we're also doing is working with the Department of Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, those, there are five regions. And they're putting, they have these long-term recovery committees that are addressing first immediate, could be health and human services, but also in the long-term jobs and business. The other hopeful thing is they had identified the need for broadband updates. And I don't know if you saw that a few weeks ago, the state, the governor's office announced a proposal for updating broadband or else they're going to be working on, on more of those proposals, which is very helpful. One of the unmet needs that have happened from COVID. And that project for economic, the SEDS update is expected to be done in June of 2022. That's all I have about that right now.
All right. What, we have other, what do we have on other, Joanna? Did we have any other topics that you wanted to?
I, I want to, if Aaron is still on, I don't know if Aaron, did you have anything that you wanted to share for the other category?
Um, I do have one thing that might be of interest. So I was involved with the Western Connecticut Water Utility Coordinating Committee, or WOC, that recently published a WOC plan for, for Western Connecticut. And one of the recommendations in the plan was to develop a checklist for, for local planning agencies to, to sort of help identify cases where, where new development, basically, basically to get, to get to get water suppliers involved in the planning process a little bit earlier on, so that, you know, there's, you know, definitely water available to serve to new development and also to look at, you know, to look at areas that, development that might be within a water supply watershed. So they've, they've asked me to head up a, a committee to sort of put together some kind of a checklist that, that could be used locally. So I'm, I'm not a local planning expert. So, you know, I would really appreciate being able to call on you all when this sort of gets kicked off, which it hasn't even been kicked off yet. But just if you guys could think about it and send me an email with, with any ideas or issues that have come up in your towns around water supply and especially with new development. That would be a really big help to me.
And you said that was the western region that was, that you're working with?
Western, so it's for, for the, all, all of the WOCs basically, for this, this, this implementation phase is, is really concerning the whole state.
Yeah, that'd be, it sounds like a great idea. We've, we've run into many problems where developers have, couldn't even get the attention, especially of Aquarian, like to bring it to their attention in their development. And we've had And we've had many times where there was a question by commission members and saying where they were positioned. They wouldn't even look at it until one, until they had approval. So I mean, I know there's a gigantic disconnect with some of the water companies on this where they don't even want to put a resource into it until they know they have a viable project. So that's all I would add to that. I think it's a great idea if they, if they get in there and we can, you know, you know, have these things looked at prior to commissions making decisions.
Right. We heard in the process where, you know, some of the, some of the water companies actually complaining that they, they weren't notified until, you know, really far along in the, in the planning process and, you know, after projects have been approved that, you know, they would have to serve water to this property and they weren't aware of it. So I'd love to talk to you more about it, Jim, and maybe.
Yeah, it's a case where I think they like to have it both ways. One way, they don't want to talk to you. The next minute, they're complaining that they didn't know. So, all right. Well, thanks. Thanks on that. We have anything else?
I just want to reiterate, affordable housing, the municipal affordable housing plans, they're due in July 2022. We can help with data and maps.
All right. Okay, well, that brings us to item nine. I don't think, we don't have anything else, Joanna, right? We can go to adjournment?
Yes, we can.
All right. Motion, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All right, we got a second. All in favor?
Oh, hold on. Jenny?
Yep.
Who was the second?
David.
Yep.
David. Okay, thank you.
All right, guys. We'll see you on the next, next meeting.
Did you, you didn't actually take the vote?
Yeah, yeah, I called for it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Everybody unanimously, unanimously adjourned.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys. Take care.
Night, all. Good night.
Hey, Jim, can you hold on a moment?